We'll call the Elgin City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 11th, 2022, to order. This evening, Mr. Shaw is ill and has asked to attend electronically. Is there a motion from the council to object to his attendance? If not, we will move forward and allow Mr. Shaw to attend. Hearing no motion, Mr. Shaw will be allowed to attend. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of April 27th, 2022.
So moved?
Second. It's been moved in second for approval. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item B is Amendment Number Two to the Engineering Services Agreement with Strand Associates for the Treatment Facilities Engineering Projects. As we all know, the Utilities Department of Water and Sewer Infrastructure requires regular maintenance to ensure its operational stability. Typically, annual projects require dedicated management oversight to ensure their success. The city, rather than hiring additional staff for these annual projects, uses professional service contracts to provide oversight for the necessary maintenance for the projects identified in a given year. An amendment to the existing services agreement with Strand and Associates will enable work to be completed for the sludge cover, the sludge collector pits at the Airlight Water Treatment Plant, and primary basin number one and secondary basin number one replacements at the Leo Nelson Riverside Water Treatment Plant.
Move for approval.
Second. It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item C is Amendment Number Six to the Engineering Services Agreement with H.R. Green. This will add construction engineering services to the Bluff City Boulevard Sewer Separation Project, which is on the regular council agenda as bid number one. The Bluff City Boulevard Combined Sewer Basin Project requires further separation. H.R. Green was initially selected as the engineer to begin this work in 2013 to design the separation strategy. It's also been hired to provide construction engineering services for the complete separation of the basin. This anticipated amendment provides construction engineering services for the Bluff City Basin Phase Three separation.
Move for approval.
Second. It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item D is Amendment Number Six to the Engineering Services Agreement with H.R. Green. This will add construction engineering services to the Bluff City Boulevard Sewer Separation Project, which is on the regular council agenda as bid number one. The Bluff City Boulevard Combined Sewer Basin Project requires further separation. H.R. Green was initially selected as the engineer to begin this work in 2013 to design the separation strategy. It's also been hired to provide construction engineering services for the complete separation of the basin. This anticipated amendment provides construction engineering services for the Bluff City Basin Phase Three separation.
Move for approval.
Second. Been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item D is the acceptance of public improvements and easements for the water main located within the site at 1,001 North Randall Road. The commercial development at this location was originally constructed with a private water main loop in 1991. In 2016, the new owner requested the private water main be converted to a public. Five years later, to a public water main. Five years later, the owner is proposing subdividing the property to add two outlots. The city's approval of the proposed outlots is requiring the conversion of the private water mains on those areas to be converted to public before the permit for the subdivision is issued. The proposed easement that's being presented to the council for consideration allows the city enter onto private property to operate, maintain, and repair the public water main. The public improvements being accepted include the water main, valves, vaults, and the fire hydrants on the property.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item E is a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the 2022 Central Area Resurfacing Project. This resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, often called an MFT resolution, identifies the city's plans for allocating motor fuel tax funds towards construction engineering services that, in this instance, will be provided by Gewalt Hamilton Associates. The 2022 Central Area Resurfacing Project, or approval of this resolution, will enable that project to go forward. IDOT reviews and approves MFT expenditures by local agencies such as Elgin, and with this resolution, staff is presenting the estimated cost of construction engineering services to be provided by the consulting engineer for the 2022 Central Area Resurfacing Project.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item F is Design Engineering Services Agreement with Trotter and Associates for the U.S. Route 20 and Reinking Road Roundabout Improvement Project. This intersection, located at the city's west side, is in the primary growth area of the city and needs to be rebuilt to address safety concerns and accommodate anticipated increase in traffic. This intersection is a critical part of the city's regional transportation network. As we all know, Route 20 connects Randall Road and points east to Illinois Route 47, U.S. Route 72, and Interstate 90. The intersection is also essential to the success of Pingree Creek, a 780-acre mixed-use development by Shodin Construction Company that was first annexed to the city in 2004. The city, Shodin, Village of Pingree Grove, and Illinois Department of Transportation are all in agreement that a roundabout is the best solution for satisfying the concerns of all parties at this intersection. The city and Pingree Grove issued resolutions to support the roundabout in 2016, and recently the city was awarded a $1.75 million grant for the roundabout work. The total amount of the work for the roundabout is expected to be about $4.1 million. Mike Pubens continues to pursue additional funding, but any outstanding costs for this roundabout will be covered by transportation impact fees collected from this and other area developments. Approval of this agreement will enable the completion of engineering design and plan preparation, anticipating construction to begin in 2023. Shodin will be presenting its final changes to the land plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission in May. The developer expects to break ground on 224 market-rate apartments and about 120 single-family residential lots later this fall.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor Captain.
Ms. Powell?
I know the last time we entertained discussions about a roundabout, it didn't go so well, but I think it's because of the location. We were trying to shoehorn that roundabout in. It works well in the right, at the right intersection where there is enough space. I've seen it in other communities and in other states, and when it's put at the right intersection where it's big enough to work correctly, it's not a problem. But if you try to do them in areas that really aren't designed well, they don't work as well, kind of like in my neighborhood.
No disagreement.
Mr. Dixon?
Well, since he made the point of talking about these roundabouts, let's just have at it a little bit. So there are a couple of different areas. So Tish is obviously on the west side, and then there are some on the east side, and we've brushed this subject before. Are we going to reevaluate some of those roundabouts on the east side of town and for the one in Tish's neighborhood? Because both or all, rather, are in very congested areas.
Absolutely, council member. And to emphasize council member Powell's point, the roundabout that's contemplated at U.S. 20 and Reinking Road is nothing like those that we're discussing on the east and west sides.
That's clear, yeah.
Anybody who's familiar with some of the work that KDOT has been performing, the new areas, knows how these modern roundabouts function. Mike Pubens, in conjunction with Aaron Neal, are both working on outreach, and here he comes, are both working on outreach into the neighborhoods to solicit opinions from the residents that are affected by the existing roundabouts. No surprise, Mr. Pubens has alternatives that provide improvements to the existing roundabouts that we hope will satisfy some of those concerns, but we're at the beginning stages of that process. And now that I've given you that long walk-up, you can provide, you can bring it to the close. How are you, Mr. Pubens?
What are we talking about? Roundabouts, right. So to the point about looking at existing roundabouts, we have two of them that we're currently looking at in neighborhoods, one on College Green Drive and one at Division and...
Gifford?
Gifford, thank you. If you've driven through them, you'll notice they're, I mean, they serve their purpose of slowing down cars to the extreme, and we think there are safer options out there, as well as considering returning to what you call a standard intersection. So we're looking at those options, working with Aaron Cosentino to get some feedback from the public on what their preferences and thoughts are, and we hope to be moving forward on replacing both of those this year.
Oh, no. I just was going to make a comment as well. Continue. Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Pughans.
Oh, you're done?
Go ahead, Mr. Pughans.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr.
I'll take any questions, sure.
I don't have any questions. That answered everything, my concerns. Just to let you know, I've spoken with the folks who are in the Neighborhood Association there, and just residents who may not be associated with it, but they've been complaining about it, I guess, amongst each other for a while, and this is something that came on my radar probably in the last couple of years. And so I'm happy to hear that this is something that we can get to sooner rather than later.
Sure.
So that, I just want to commend you for making it up here so quickly. It's like we said it, and it was like, poof, you were upstairs. So I don't know if you have like a magic walkway here, but you got here pretty quickly, so I appreciate that.
I waited the hallway.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's what it is, okay.
I was just out there here waiting for my name.
No, I got you. Thank you. That's all I had.
You're very welcome.
Okay, Ms. Rauschenberger, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to mention that I think there's a definite aversion to roundabouts in Illinois or maybe Elgin. Roundabouts are used all over in Europe, in Australia, Hong Kong, Japan, and I really feel as though the ones we had put in were engineered incorrectly. They're way too big. But they're also lifesavers. I often think about the young couple that was killed at Dundee Avenue and route Summit Street, and had a roundabout been there, it would have been impossible to T-bone and kill somebody there. Roundabouts are really our traffic calmers, and they provide safety from the point of view as you might have an accident, but you certainly aren't going to die in a T-bone accident. And I think it would do well to look at Seattle. The city of Seattle has had what they call traffic circles for many, many years, and neighborhoods can ask to put them in, and they're not big, they're just kind of a small little round thing at a problematic intersection because it slows traffic down. And so I think we should be open, have broader minds about how traffic circles, number one, can be safer for our drivers, safer for our neighborhoods, calm traffic. I, for example, have had quite a few people on Congdon Avenue talk to me about what we can do to traffic calm. And stop signs, they know, it's by research, stop signs don't always diminish speed, sometimes people speed up faster. But a traffic circle, if you have to slow down and kind of go around this little circle, it doesn't have to be as huge as the intersection. So I would like everyone to be open-minded about the idea of traffic circles and roundabouts in the future. That's all. And I know you are.
Very much. I think Councilwoman Powell made a great point. I think Elgin's experience with them is negative because maybe they haven't been designed properly. I think the two that were put in were done with the best of intentions, to try to eliminate a four-way stop, which, as you said, there's no magical powers about a stop sign, right? And drivers are pretty smart. They know when they should be stopping and when they shouldn't. So I think we'll continue to look at them. We've actually, we started the process of applying for federal funding for a possible roundabout at Highland and Lyle. Again, would be another great location based on the traffic volumes and the speeds, and again, the key is designing them properly, and I think people will come around to enjoying them.
Yes, and I don't think size of the intersection matters that much. I know, again, in Seattle, any neighborhood for traffic calming purposes can ask for a small, as they say, they call them traffic circles, at their intersection. Just slows people down and also saves gas because you're not stopping, starting, stopping, starting. You can go slowly.
This is idle time, right?
Okay, anything else from Mr. Pubens? Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item G is an agreement with Raftellus for strategic planning services. The city's 2018 through 2022 strategic principles and priorities were adopted in 2017 and are coming to an end. These principles and priorities have served as the city's highest-level planning tool to guide initiatives and policy. With this current plan in its final year, staff has begun work on soliciting professional strategic planning consulting services for the purpose of obtaining an experienced and qualified consulting firm to guide the city council, leadership, staff, and community in the development of an updated strategic plan. The city received five proposals and is recommending the approval of an agreement with Raftellus in the amount of $99,500.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think I was briefed on this, and I don't think it's in the memo here, but I believe this organization does work with ELGL organizations. Is that true?
It is, and if you give me a moment, Assistant City Manager Karina Nava has spearheaded this initiative. She can come and provide additional information, and we also have representatives from Raftellus available via Zoom if necessary. Hello, Ms. Nava.
Hi. Yes, Raftellus has worked with ELGL in the past. They partner together for some different initiatives, and we have Michelle Ferguson on Zoom with us if you want her to expand a little bit on that.
Okay, the reason I bring it up is I'm an avid consumer of ELGL content. For those of you who don't know, it's local...
Engaging local government leaders.
Yeah, local government stuff, like really deep, but they're kind of a fresher organization, so I was really happy when I found out that they've done work with this organization. I think it's going to be a nice change of pace, hopefully, and I guess if we do have, I'm sorry, who is the individual on Zoom?
Michelle.
Michelle. I would be curious to know what kind of measurement system that they've used in existing cities that they've worked with. Is it standard like KPIs, OKRs? How do they establish those, measure them?
Michelle?
Absolutely. Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you. My name is Michelle Ferguson. I'm a vice president with Raftellus, and just very briefly on ELGL, one of our staff members is Ben Kittelson, who was one of the founders of ELGL, and Kristen Wyatt, who is the executive director, was scheduled to be at our Cincinnati office. We are doing training and partnership with ELGL for local government utility leaders across the country in our training academy in Cincinnati this week. So yes, lots of partnerships with ELGL across our firm. We are all local government professionals by training. I myself am a former assistant city manager, assistant county manager, and many of the folks that are part of our project team have also worked for local governments before. And specific to your question about measurements, absolutely, we do a tremendous amount of work with performance measures. We believe in making sure that whatever performance metrics or KPIs are developed are ones that are customized to the specific goals and objectives that you have in your strategic plan. So we certainly look at industry benchmarks, but we also make sure that they're customized. So in this case, that they're the right ones for Elgin, the right ones for the community, and specifically relate to the goals and objectives that are part of your strategic plan.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional information, and yeah, it's more so, I'm not necessarily focused on a destination, but more so putting the controls in place for, you know, perfect examples of pandemic that derailed a lot of plans for different municipalities. So, thank you for your time.
Anything else? Ms. Rauschenberger?
Yes, thank you. Could you just tell us maybe about a strategic plan you've done for a city similar to our size and situation? Or just to talk a little bit about it?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Just about two or three months ago, I finished up a strategic planning process with several members of the team that are proposed here for Elgin with the Village of Lyle. I've worked with Lyle for several years and helped them develop their initial strategic plan pre-pandemic, probably about four years ago. And then just this past year, it was time to update, very similar to the situation that you all are in now. They had, the plan that they had developed several years ago had lived its useful life, and it was time to revise the plan. And so we proposed in the work with Lyle, a somewhat similar scope of work that we have here. We began by meeting with their management team, talking with staff. We did some employee surveying, and it was important to get feedback from the community as well. One of the differences was the timing of that most recent strategic planning process was in the midst of COVID, and so we did quite a bit of work virtually. We did a number of community meetings virtually, some focus groups. In the case of the scope of work we proposed here for Elgin, we have a mix of both in-person and virtual meetings to allow people to participate in ways that they feel most comfortable. And in the case of Lyle, we spent several days then with the elected officials after going through a pretty robust community engagement process to then work to develop ultimately what were, I think, four or five, I can't remember off the top of my head, I think four or five key performance areas. And then once the elected officials had developed the framework for the strategic plan, then we came back and met with the staff, the leadership team, to develop specific KPIs, metrics, for implementation of each of those critical success factors so that the organization had a way to report back progress toward achieving each of those critical success factors.
And, thank you. That's very interesting. Have you, I'm sure you work across the United States?
That's correct.
And do you see, for example, similar strategic directions in the Midwest versus the East Coast or the West Coast in a similar-sized community? Do we have different thoughts and processes or, you know, long-term goals?
Yeah, there's, I would imagine, you know, as I think about, we are a national firm. We do work across the country. We do strategic planning and assessment work for local governments across all time zones, as I say. And I think some of the work that we've done out west, not surprisingly, has focused lately more on environmental concerns, particularly water resources. When we go to other places of the country, that's not quite as high on the priority list. I was just at the coast, at the East Coast, doing some work with a community there, and sea level rise is an important issue that they deal with, and so that's a critical part of their strategic plan. Stormwater management, in a place I was at in another coastal community in the north, northeast, stormwater was a particular issue. So I think in some cases, there are a lot of geographical considerations that filter into a strategic plan, but I think at the core, what we see across the country is an interest in connection, community engagement, and maintaining core services, really focusing on what local government is really in business to do and how the strategic plan can help shore up the core services that each community relies on. How each community delivers those services may be a little bit different based on the demographics and the community values, but ensuring that the organization is set up to provide those services, that the elected officials have clarity on the direction for those services, that's one of the kind of universal threads that I would say we see across the country quite a bit.
Okay, thank you very much. It was interesting.
Mr. Shaw, you had a question?
Yeah, just curious to see if we could just, I saw in the Cal memo, under the proposed scope of services, just a number of bullet items. I was wondering if we could just get a quick overview of the process that we would be following to build out the strategic plan, and kind of who some of the main players would be that would be involved in that.
Sure, we'd be happy to talk through that a little bit. Our process is, you know, we believe a strategic plan, our role in the strategic plan is really to facilitate the process, to create the space so that the community, you all, the mayor and the council and staff can work together to really identify what the key priorities are for this next period in your strategic plan. And so we start by meeting with the project team, folks that the city has identified internally to help kind of walk with us through the process. And then we would have individual conversations with the mayor and each member of the city council to hear your perspectives about Elgin, about what you see as the strengths, where the opportunities are, and certainly where the challenges are, things that you hope to address in the strategic plan. We've also proposed to have some listening sessions with your, the chairs of your boards and commissions. We believe that as advisory boards, they're important, they have their pulse in the community just like you all do too, and so to hear their perspective early in the process is an important component that we have included in there. Also, talking obviously with city staff and pulling all of that information together along with some of that qualitative as well as quantitative data about the trends, current trends within the community, into what we call an environmental scan, so that you have some baseline information about those strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges from all of that initial input. Then what we do is spend time with you, the elected officials, as well as your senior leadership, envisioning sessions to really go through that environmental scan, hear what we heard during that initial process, and then use that facilitated retreat setting to spend time really identifying the vision as well as your key focus areas, really the framework for the strategic plan. And then we believe that a strategic plan is best when touched by as many people in the community as possible, and so we would take that framework that you all have developed back out to the community. And I mentioned, you know, certainly in this pandemic environment, we have gotten very well-versed at virtual meetings, but it doesn't always, it doesn't always provide as much that people, as people want in some of the in-person meetings as well, too. And so, as I mentioned earlier, we've proposed a mix of both in-person as well as virtual opportunities for the community to provide input on that draft framework of that strategic that strategic plan elements that you all will have developed. And then, we bring that back to you, so that you can hear what the community said, what their reaction was to that framework, and use, use their feedback to really finalize the elements of the strategic plan. And then, we would work with staff to develop detailed implementation plans for each of the key focus areas or the critical success factors that are part of your strategic plan framework. And that's really where we spend time with staff and goal team orientation, to talk about what types of performance metrics or KPIs would be most relevant for each of those critical success factors, so that again, it can be used as an opportunity to report back to you all, as well as to the community, on progress towards achievement of the strategic plan objectives.
No, thank you. Thank you for that background on that one. I guess a quick question to staff. This seems like a much different process than what we went through with our last strategic plan. Could you just comment on that, and maybe provide a little bit of compare and contrast?
Yeah, well, I started with the city, I think, at the tail end of that process. So, I'll try to summarize what I think was the, the process for that. We had a Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, also known as S-PAC, and I don't recall the year that that started, might have been...
2016. 2012 to 2017.
Twenty, okay, twenty, okay, 2012, yeah, to 2017. And that was a commission that was appointed, I believe, by the mayor and city council. And it was made up of different community members who worked with city staff to come up with the different priorities and areas that we have now for the strategic principles and priorities. And that was brought to city council for approval in December of 2017.
Okay, gotcha.
So, there was, yeah, there was no consultant involved in any of that.
Gotcha. Okay. No, thank you. Thank you for that compare and contrast. I, I will be supportive of the measure tonight. I think it's, I think the framework for, you know, just getting additional voices into it in this round, in this method, I, I can support that. Thank you.
Anything, Mr. Dixon?
Ms. Ferguson, thank you for being here this evening and being available. Just looking at your proposed scope of services, just out of curiosity, I'm wondering if you provide any supportive services beyond completing the actual plan? And, and I just ask that because knowing that you're, really what you're, what you do here and around the country is to put that plan together in support of, of residents and staff and, and the elected officials, but just out of curiosity, do you also offer any services beyond that point to help a city in achieving those goals that were, that were set and that you helped develop?
Absolutely, we do. We will often be asked to help with some of the specific initiatives where it makes sense. Sometimes, there may be specific items that come from the strategic plan that may, that may need some additional assistance, that the organization may not have capacity to do on their own. It may be just being available as, to help with some of the accountability, to be, facilitate conversations in the future about check-ins at, you know, six-month or 12-month intervals, things like that. We don't include those as part of our base scope of work, because we never, we never presume that that's a need that the organization has. But certainly, those are services that we have been asked to provide after the completion of the strategic plan. And oftentimes, you know, we've developed longstanding relationships with a number of communities, Lyle just being one of them that I mentioned, where they will contact us in, in subsequent years when it's time to go through a refresh, or maybe even it is just to facilitate a, a goal-setting or priority-setting session with the elected officials or the management team. We do that quite regularly. So, it may not be a full, a full redo of the strategic plan, revision of the strategic plan, but it may be a check-in, or just a facilitated conversations that can often be helpful to, to keep, to keep momentum going, knowing that staff is busy, that you all have lots of things on your agenda, each meeting, and certainly staff has a lot of work to be focused on as well, too. And so, sometimes it can be helpful to have a partner in that process.
Thank you. And you, and I assume that you offer all those additional services free of charge, right?
Of course we do. I always say, we never, we never, we never charge for phone calls.
For phone calls, oh, okay. Phone calls, I got it. Thank you. I appreciate your time, Ms. Ferguson.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item H, our proposed amendments to the city's crime-free housing ordinance. The city first created its crime-free housing ordinance and program in 2006 for rental residential properties. The ordinance and program require the owner and authorized property agent of a rental residential property to successfully complete a landlord training class. The program also requires the use of a crime-free lease addendum, which includes provisions stating certain defined criminal activity constitutes a violation of the lease and is good cause for termination of a tenancy. Staff is recently engaged in a comprehensive review of the legal developments in this area, and has been participating in ongoing discussions at the request of the NAACP and, in the NAACP. Staff is recommending that the city adopt certain amendments to the crime-free housing ordinance outlined in the memo.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Paul?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Captain. A couple of questions I have for our attorney. The crime data that's included, and maybe actually some of this might actually be for Chief Lally, so I'll, I'll just kind of cue her up. I know she's gonna maybe take longer than Mike Poobens to get in here, so I'll give her a little bit more time. But for our, our city attorney, what is the primary difference between what we are proposing and the Cook County ordinance that's included as part of this agreement?
Okay, the, the Cook County Just Housing Ordinance Amendment has provisions in it that if you're going to conduct criminal history background checks in connection with a residential lease, that you have to follow a certain specified procedure and use certain We do not require a criminal history background check in our, our crime-free housing ordinance. It is talked about and recommended, and we have amended our materials to now refer to the Cook County ordinance and to include information on it, and have instructed, the materials now instruct landlords that if you're in Cook County, you must follow that ordinance, and if you're not, we recommend that you do so.
So, is there a reason why we just didn't adopt the Cook County ordinance?
Well, we, we don't, I mean, we could adopt the Cook, we could adopt something similar to the Cook County ordinance, but we don't require criminal history background checks. So, we just, as part of the training, we provide guidance of what the requirements under law are, which are essentially to follow the Cook County ordinance if you're going to conduct a criminal history background check.
So, Cook County does require them on their side? So, the Cook County portion of Elgin?
Cook County does not have a crime-free housing ordinance that requires criminal history background checks. The Cook County ordinance applies to all landlords in Cook County, whether it's pursuant, they're doing something pursuant to crime-free housing or not. It just is a set of requirements to follow if you're going to do a criminal history background check.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And my question for Chief Lally. The crime data that is included for reference prior to the adoption of the city's crime-free housing ordinance in, in 2006, and looking at the data after, there's appeared to be a pretty significant drop in some of these areas. I think my, my question is, is twofold. One, it, it seemed like the data was just focused on multifamily properties. Is there data, because obviously, this addendum, this crime-free housing addendum applies to all rental properties in the city, correct? Not just multifamily properties. Is there some type of data that looks at crime-related changes in single-family homes around the city?
So, the data that was provided to Corporation Counsel Cogli, we pulled from Clifford Court, Mulberry Court, Poplar Creek, Fleetwood, Times Square, and we looked at those areas because it's, yes, if you go to individual areas, it's a rental, this is a good gauge to see what's going on in high-population dense areas. So, that's why we chose those locations. To go, and even to get this data going back, really from 2012, going backwards was, it was difficult to get, because we started our new computer system in 2012. So, to do that for individual locations of rental properties, it would, it would take a lot of time. So, this was just a, looking at areas where high population, high density, and seeing what those numbers look like.
Okay, because I don't see, like, some of our other larger apartment complexes like Blackhawk, Hunter's Ridge. I didn't see those included. So, I, I guess my other question is related to, I know that this is based on a Seattle ordinance, what we're looking at, some of the changes, well, the original ordinance, I'm sorry, was based on what Seattle was doing, and we're moving away from that. Looking at some of the communities that have moved towards, have, have already taken steps towards what we're looking to do, have they seen marked changes in their crime up or down in, in these rental areas?
It's my understanding, this was a Mesa, Arizona?
Yeah, the original, the original crime-free housing ordinance was, appears to have been, come from Mesa, Arizona. The changes you're seeing here, I mean, these are more recent. I'm not sure that there's, I mean, these kinds of amendments that we're making here are, are relatively new developments. I mean, I think this, this is an evolving area of the law, so I, I don't know that, I haven't seen in the literature, and I did a lot of research just in news to see if other communities had adopted these amendments. I'm not aware of any local communities that have, are, would be adopting what we're suggesting tonight. They just, they haven't updated their ordinance. Most of them have the old version, and I don't think we're contacted by the groups that contacted us, because we reached out to a number of communities locally and asked if they had been contacted. They hadn't been, but we're aware that they've contacted some communities throughout the country and have been talking to them. So, this is kind of a process that's, we're at the beginning of, but, you know, our ordinance was adopted in '06, and there have been a number of developments in the law since then, which I think the amendments we're presenting tonight address.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad we're taking a, a look at this and, and making necessary changes.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. For Corporate Counsel, could you give us, in the public, a brief overview of some of the highlights of the changes that will be in place?
Sure. So, there's two parts to this program. One is the crime-free lease addendum, which is provided by ordinance, and those materials are redlined in, in your, in your materials. But just in summary, the changes to those, there are a number of criminal offenses which can serve as grounds for termination of a lease. Those have been revised to be more specific and to refer to crimes that, that indicate a demonstrable risk to resident's safety or property. They also, these offenses have a basis under analogous federal law and federal regulations. There are several existing, more general references in the crime-free housing lease addendum that refer to certain criminal activity, including but not limited to, and they're just, in my view, too generalized. Those would be deleted. And we are using specific references to more specific criminal activity that you see in federal regulations, and which have, and the one relating to drug-related criminal activity is the, is based upon an analogous provision in federal law, and is the same provision that has been upheld by the United States Supreme Court in a challenge to a similar sort of crime-free requirement that are cited in the materials. The remaining criminal activities specified in, in paragraphs two, three, and four of the revised addendum are also based upon analogous federal regulations under the Title for Housing and Urban Development, allowing for owner termination of leases for any criminal activity that threatens the health, safety, or right to peaceful enjoyment of the premises by other residents. Any criminal activity threatens the health, safety, or right to peaceful enjoyment of those residing in the immediate vicinity, or any violent criminal activity on the property. We would add several new provisions based upon developments in the laws, as many of you know and recall, the Illinois Capacity Use of Medical Cannabis Progress Act and the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act now allow for personal use of cannabis. And so, and we are prohibited even as a home rental unit from regulating contrary to that. So, the addendum has been amended to provide that it would not be interpreted or construed to prohibit the possession and personal use of cannabis as authorized by those statutes. Also, we make reference now to the Illinois Human Rights Act. There have been intervening amendments to the Illinois Human Rights Act, which preclude the use of certain arrest records in, in connection with real estate transactions. Those include records of any arrests not leading to a conviction, a juvenile record or criminal history record information ordered expunged, sealed, or impounded. So, we would preclude the use of those in connection with these transactions. And then, we would also add to the lease addendum a reference to another Illinois statute, which would provide that a tenant is not in violation of the lease addendum and won't be penalized for calling the police if it was made to prevent or respond to domestic violence or sexual violence, the intervention or emergency assistance was needed to respond to prevent domestic violence or sexual violence, the contact was made by and behalf of persons with disability, and other circumstances relating to domestic violence. And it would specifically say that a resident who is an innocent party of a victim of a crime, including actually threatened domestic violence, will not be in violation of the lease addendum. So, we don't want to penalize people for calling the police, and so, we're specifying that. That has been an intervening statute as well since we adopted this. So, it, it provides a number of new provisions that recognize some of these new statutes. The training manual would also be revised. Those revisions are also in your materials. There's a new specific reference and quite a bit of information on the Cook County Just Housing Amendment and the requirements for that. The manual would also now include information on tenant consumer reports and requirements of landlords when using consumer reports under the Fair Credit Reporting Act, telling them what their obligations are under that. Also would now include information on the Illinois Human Rights Act and the requirements of that statute with respect to real estate transactions. And just a variety of other editorial provisions on some of the forms, suggested forms that are included in that, to conform to these other substantive requirements.
Good. Thank you. And if I can just summarize the summary, it protects the residents. There were some very broad, stroking elements to all of these documents that allowed, I'm gonna say discriminatory practices to take place, not by any one individual, but just systematically, and this is now has been addressed. So, which is great. And so, I just want to commend also to Corporate Counsel for putting this all together. We, he and I have had several conversations surrounding this, this ordinance, and I know he's been in communication with the, with NAACP and other organizations who have had concerns, and those organizations actually teamed up and, and worked to, with him on this. And so, he really put, took those recommendations to heart when putting this documentation together. So, thank you for that, Corporate Counsel. That's all.
Anything else? Just a comment from me, you know, I go back quite a ways. And before this ordinance was written, and working with neighborhood groups, and in my own neighborhood in particular, and one thing we kind of just jumped over is the training for landlords. When this first started, it was abysmal. People didn't know how to be a landlord, they didn't know what they needed to do, they didn't know how to screen people, simple thing, they didn't know how to put locks on laundry rooms and things like that, and it just created a huge mess. And I talk about this, I don't use this term lightly, but I saw apartments where one tenant tortured 20 families, and that's not acceptable. And you have to protect the people that are living there and make sure that they can live their life as well, so there have to be tools to make sure that we can do this and make it fair for everybody. But landlord training was a huge step with this thing, and that was, there were some arguments about that, and boy, some kicking and screaming going to classes, but it was important to do that, and I think we've really had some benefits from that. And just to make, just to keep up with the current laws and how things are going, and to refresh people in their mind of what the purpose of their owning that property is sometimes. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. The next item is a kind of a lengthy item, so I'm going to request that we adjourn the committee of the whole meeting and move, we'll reconvene with the regular city council meeting at seven o'clock.
So, move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene with the regular council meeting at 7:00 P.M.
Please. Okay, we'll call a regular meeting for the Elgin City Council to order. This evening, Mr. Shaw is ill and has asked to attend electronically. And if there are objections from the council to his attendance that way, they would need to make a motion. If there is no motion, we will encourage him to attend. Seeing no motion, Mr. Shaw, you're welcome to join us this evening. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of April 27th, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Abstain. Motion's approved eight, zero with one abstention. We have three communications this evening. Would Jim Mosby meet me at the podium? Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, whereas millions of citizen soldiers who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of the sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion and its auxiliaries, the veterans of foreign wars and its auxiliaries, and the ANVETS have pledged to remind Americans annually of this debt through the distribution of the poppy as the memorial flower. Now therefore, I David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 12, 13, and 14, 2022, as poppy days in Elgin and ask all citizens to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by making a donation for and wearing the memorial poppy during these days. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank all the city of Elgin, being supportive of the veterans. We all appreciate it. There's still a lot of work to be done with our fellow vets. Not all of them are as lucky as we are. And that's what the money goes to that we raise for these poppies, is to support our veterans. Our saying is veterans helping veterans. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Puebens and Eric Weiss, please come up. Please come up. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Elgin, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders, and the engineers and managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Elgin to gain knowledge and maintain going interest, ongoing interest, and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association, now therefore I David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby designate the week of May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Just briefly, thank you, Mayor, council, and public for helping us celebrate our public works, public services, employees, and their achievements. Eric and I are the public face frequently of public works and public services, but I can tell you it's really the men and women of all departments that were mentioned that really keep this city running. They come in every day, they're committed, they're dedicated, they're hardworking people who help make Elgin a safe, healthy, great community to live in. So, on behalf of Director Weiss and I, I'd like to publicly thank all of our employees. Thank you.
Rabbi Shemtav, join me at the podium. Equality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our county, and our society at large. And in the city of Elgin, we strive for the betterment of all our residents through our increased focus on education and sharing, through providing the possibility of an excellent education for all, especially children, and which to gain knowledge through rigorous study, we can hope for a brighter, kinder, and more united prosperous future in the lives of so many. And whereas the educational system must also focus on building character by emphasizing the cultivation of universal moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society from the dawn of civilization, including the values known as the Seven Noahite Laws, and one of the leading global advocates for the advancement of education, the Lubavikter Rebbe Rabbi Menachem Schneerson of Righteous Memory stressed the importance of moral and ethical education as the bedrock of humanity and the hallmark of a healthy society, and strongly urged that education be reinforced by the inoculation, inculcation of strong moral values. And in recognition of the Rebbe's outstanding and lasting contributions towards improvement in world education, morality, and acts of charity, he was awarded the Congressional Gold Medal, and the United States Congress has established his birthdate as a national day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. And whereas April 12th, 2022 marked 120 years since the Rebbe's birth, and the date is celebrated across these United States and around the globe, and to the Rebbe's vision and guidance and leadership. And whereas for more than 40 years, the President of the United States has recognized, honored the Rebbe's vision each year on that day by proclaiming it Education and Sharing Day, USA. Now therefore, I David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, to be Education and Sharing Day in the city of Elgin, and call upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to those within your communities and work to create a better, brighter, and hopeful, more hopeful future for all. And I apologize, you know, I've had some health issues for the past month, and that's why we're reading this about three weeks late. Rabbi, I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, for awarding this proclamation. The Lubavitch Rebbe of Blessed Memory, who is my spiritual mentor, emphasized how every human being, indeed every act of goodness and kindness makes the world a better place. And when we look to educate children, both children in age and children in knowledge, it's not just about the sharing of knowledge, but educating them to become the leaders of tomorrow. And it's our responsibility to put an emphasis on that, and I'm very happy that the city has recognized that, and hopefully we will all take it into our personal lives to advance the education of the people around us and those who we can influence to be better people. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have no public comments this evening. We have one bid. It's bid number 22-026, Bluff City Combined Sewer Separation Phase Three.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we award this bid to Boulder Contractors, Inc. of Cary, Illinois, in the amount of $5,932,828.
Second. It's been moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yeah, I mean, spending $5.9 million, I think somebody should say something. But I do want to say that, and how convenient that this is Public Works Month. These are the types of projects that aren't sexy, don't get a whole lot of attention, but are critical to the infrastructure and the well-being of our community. The combined sewers that we have in our old town of Elgin are significant, and we've really done a good job, correction, I think we've done an excellent job over the past decade separating these sewers. And for those who may not be familiar what a combined sewer is, it's a sewer that not only captures sanitary waste that comes out of your house, but it also captures rainwater. And the problem comes about when we get a large amount of rain in a short period of time, those pipes, a lot of times overflow, and they back up into people's homes, they back up into people's basements, they cause flooding on the streets. And we've heard for years from people in a lot of these areas how, you know, they have experienced flooding and backups in their basements, and the havoc, and just how that has, you know, had a negative impact on their home. I mean, if you could imagine going downstairs in your basement and it being, you know, five inches of raw sewage in your basement, not a pleasant thing to have to deal with. So, I just want to thank staff for their continued work in this area. Thank my colleagues for, you know, for us continuing to recognize the need to budget money in this area, a whole lot of money in this area, because it's not something I think that people really understand the importance of. So I just, I wanted to say that and say something so that people really think about the impact that this does have in our community, and to thank our staff for their work.
Anything else? Mr. Stefan?
Just quickly, and Eric, I see you're still here, and Mike might be around the corner, so I'm not asking this tonight, so don't think you have to get up here and do it, but we've been at this since the late 90s, as Councilman Powell just mentioned, and I think it would be nice to have an update, how much we've gotten done, how much we have left, what the anticipated cost of that is. Because we have, not now, I see you getting up. We're trying to stay on the schedule for this meeting, right? Yeah.
He probably has the number in his head. He knows the number.
Okay, well, I was not asking, I was not trying to put you on the spot here, but you want to get up?
He knows.
Okay. He is, he wants to get up and tell us now, okay.
He wants to show us how smart he is.
Appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight, and thanks for the questions. I don't have the exact number of how much we've spent over the past probably 30 years on combined sewer separation. That being said, I'm particularly excited about completion of this project, as the past couple of years, we've observed 30 combined sewer overflows to the river each year from this specific basin, and this will be the completion of the Bluff City Basin separation. So, yeah, the efforts that you all have put into in financing this work has definitely seen significant improvements in the reduction of, as you mentioned, basement backups and combined sewer overflows to the river.
Does $90 million in estimated work ring a bell?
Yeah, I wanted to say it was 110 million that has been completed, but, yeah, so it's, yes. I just didn't want to misspeak, but I believe, yes, it's close to 100 million that has been spent over the past 30 years.
And just so people understand how fast these things work, I started working at the Water Recreation District in 1974, and one of the first jobs we had was to take a look at the Bluff City Interceptor and the combined sewer there, to make plans for that project. And I've been doing this just about all my life, and I was hired as a Clean Water Act baby, and the edict that came out of Washington at that time is we want to separate all the sewers, and here we are. That's how fast it works. Thank you, Eric. Anything else? Ms. Martinez?
Yes, Eric, before you sit down, just to give people perspective, how much more is there to do?
Yeah, I don't want to be bringing the bad news, but approximately 80 million is still outstanding in our separation, necessary to fully separate our system.
And I think it's very important to let people know that this is very expensive, and like the councilwoman said, it's not a sexy item, but it's something that needs to be done as a municipality, because we're talking about quality of life for people. So, thank you to you and Mr. Puebens for everything you do, and when people say that the city spends a lot of money, these are things that we do, that we have to do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved nine, zero. Brings us to other business. The first item is consideration of petition 15-21 for 214 Walnut Avenue, conditional use for a planned development for the reconstruction, expansion of the existing parking lot, and the construction of an outdoor patio for an existing restaurant. Mr. Malat, good to see you again.
Mayor, and welcome back.
Thank you.
This property is located at the northwest corner of Walnut Avenue and State Street. Here is Walnut. This is State. Grand Victoria Casino is over here. This is Ryerson Park, Shell Gas Station at this corner, and St. Edward's Central Catholic High School is in the upper left. Here's a closer view of the property showing the building, existing parking, and the site of the former Stout Madison Funeral Home. The applicant acquired the funeral home property in 2012 and demolished the building in 2014 as part of an economic development agreement with the city. The applicant requests approval of a new outdoor patio on the east side of the Walnut Speakeasy Restaurant, and of a reconstructed and expanded parking lot west and north of the restaurant. The southwest corner of State and Stanish would be reserved as a pad for a new approximately 3,000-square-foot commercial building, which would share the new parking with the restaurant. There are no plans for the new building at this time. The reconstructed and expanded parking lot would increase the amount of parking on-site from 69 to 96 spaces. The new parking would be enclosed with a four-foot-high ornamental fence and new landscaping, and a new six-foot fence along the property's west lot line will screen the adjacent single-family homes. The new outdoor patio would be partially covered with two contemporary metal canopies and screened with a 12-foot-high masonry wall along Walnut Avenue that is designed to look like an addition to the restaurant, including windows, awnings, and foundation landscaping. The project also includes minor exterior improvements to the restaurant and the former barber shop. The applicant is present, should you have any questions. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. Subject conditions outlined within your packet.
Move for approval, subject to the conditions.
It's been moved and second for approval. Subject conditions, any discussion? Mr. Thorne, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Well, I'm very familiar with the restaurant and the neighborhood, and I like what you've said about the aesthetics. I guess just as, if I were a neighbor immediately next door, I'd be at least questioning the additional outside noise. What's expectation?
Sure, well, the design of this is designed intentionally to ensure that the sound stays in. If we go back to, for example, our aerial view, you can see that the majority of any existing residences would be south and west. You've got the building here on the west that is going to serve to screen sound going west, the fake facade, if you will, the simulated restaurant facade to the south accomplishes that, so we believe that this will do a good job of keeping all the sound in. Notwithstanding, the design does not excuse full compliance with our noise ordinance.
Do you know if they have expressed the desire to have live music out there or anything of the like, or is it just going to be patio dining and so forth?
The applicant is here and can talk about their plans, like to bring them forward and give you greater detail to your question.
Tell them to bring some certificates.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Lou.
Thank you for giving us our time. My name's Peter Limbesis, I'm project manager, and there will be no live music. The owner, Alex, is opposed of it, he's tried it in the past indoors, so if it doesn't work indoors, we don't see why it's going to work outdoors. A little ambiance, dinner music, and then we'll accordingly go with the ordinances, baffles, whatever is needed. Did I miss a question?
No, sounds great, thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, thank you very much.
Anything else? Ms. Martinez, before you leave.
Oh, that's all right, thank you. So the two-story building right now that's being used as rental, is that what I understand?
It's being used as rental. Basically, the rental is some of our employees.
Okay.
And when the project goes forward, you know, that building will not be residential anymore, meaning forward in the future, when we build the pad that we were talking about in the north, is that the northeast corner? Sorry. Oh, there you go. So when we build a pad, then we're proposing that this existing two-story building will either be storage or we'll level it, more room.
Thank you for your explanation, I was just curious on what plan.
Any other, yes, Ms. Rauschenberger?
Oh, yeah. No, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to the owners of the Walnut Speakeasy. I remember going in there in 2008, just as the recession just crashed, the whole country, and we said, "Really? You're going to open a restaurant in Elgin, Illinois in 2008? And, you know, look what you've done." Obviously, they were great restaurateurs, they have been a boon to the neighborhood, people love it. I know Mayor Shock used to go there once a week, and so congratulations for, you know, taking a risk, and obviously you knew what you were doing, and for expanding in Elgin.
As much as COVID has affected us, we are doing well. Thank you very much.
Yes, obviously, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, I also just want to say thank you too as well. You guys have been great in the community. There were people who were concerned with it being there and saying there were going to be so many different issues, and it's been pretty quiet over there. And then also too, I don't think this was mentioned, but you also own the, you guys also own the restaurant directly across the street.
The Larkin Owl recently.
Right, the eatery, yeah.
Yeah, we opened closed with all the mandates, and we recently opened it again two months ago, so we're trying.
Yeah, you guys continue to do great business here, so thank you, we appreciate it.
We're very devoted to the community as well, and thank you for letting us grow, or consider to let us grow. We truly appreciate it.
And this is just, last thing, this is just a great improvement to the neighborhood, because it was a little bit of a blight there, having these vacant lots and open fields, and it was like, you know, it kind of looked disjointed, but this seems like it's really just going to bring it all together, so thank you, and I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Powell?
Thank you. I just want to also say thanks for the work that you're proposing. You have great food and great ambiance. I have to admit, I'm a little disappointed that you're not proposing to do outdoor music, because I remember coming to the Walnut Speakeasy during a time where you did feature live music inside of your restaurant, and it was great. So, I was a little disappointed to hear that you won't be doing that.
So, in lieu of the live music, what we do is we discount our wings on Thursday, where we don't really, we really don't make money, so what we were spending in bands, we're spending on you now.
And I do appreciate those wings.
Thank you.
So, but I really like what I'm seeing, what you're proposing. You definitely need the additional parking stalls and parking spaces, I think that will be great so that, you know, people won't have to park on the street and walk to come to your facility. A question I have, what are the long-term plans for the vacant barber shop that's next door?
It's, we don't have any right now. It's, what we're trying to do is use just the restrooms in that part, convenience restrooms for now, but we really don't have plans for that, and if needed, you know, we could expand the patio. Actually, I really 100% can't answer that. Alex would, be better to answer that, so I don't want to wing it.
I was just curious, because everything else, you know, all the new and shiny stuff, and I said, oh, well, I just assume.
Well, we are beautifying the face, facing Walnut.
Yes.
Of the barber shop, and we're, there's a window that says barber shop that's going to be enclosed, and it'll all be unison.
Got it.
Window down, remove window sign, and that's about it.
Okay. Just curious.
We're not sure yet. It's taken us since 2014 to come this far, not on our part, of course, so if there's any recommendations, it's time to listen.
Since you asked.
Anything else? Mr. Dixon, real quick.
Expand the patio. I think that's the most logical, give more space out there, that direction. It's facing our riverfront, you can't exactly see it from there, but it's still facing it. I think that's the best use of that space, since you're asking, and, you know, shown that it's a barber shop, it's super small inside, it's not a lot that you can do, and I used to go to that, I used to go to that barber shop years and years ago. So, it's super small, and you can't do much with it. I say knock it down and expand the patio, since you're asking.
We appreciate the feedback, and it's duly noted.
Yeah.
I will let the AGA.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Okay, clerk, please call the roll. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item two is consideration of petitions 54-21 and 55-21, 1210 Hunter Drive, map amendment to plan development, conditional use to construct a new 15,800 square foot building for Markland's Community Day Services and Day School. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located at the southwest corner of Summit Street and Hunter Drive. Summit is here, Hunter here. The Cunningham Square town home, townhouses are here. This is Second Baptist Church. This is the Tiempo de Fray. St. James AME Church is here. Markland requests approval of a new building for its community day services and day school. Markland is a nonprofit organization that serves infants, childrens, teens, and adults with developmental disabilities and special healthcare needs. Markland was approved to occupy the existing 4,500 square foot building on the property in 2021, but they decided to expand their services necessitating a larger building. The existing building was one of three approved by Plan Development in 2001, but the other two were never built. The new building would house Markland's Community Day Services Program, which serves up to 36 adults, providing vocational training and improvements to daily living, social, and technology skills. The facility would also house Markland's Day School for up to 30 children with mild to complex disabilities, including autism. A new six-foot-high solid fence would be installed along the south and west property lines, adjacent to the single-family homes, with extensive landscaping throughout the site. The 74 parking spaces exceed the regulatory parking requirement, and Markland has included four parking spaces for their school bus. The new building's exterior would feature brick and precast concrete panels. Markland operates three other similar facilities: the Markland-Wasman Center, located one-third of a mile to the east at 1435 Summit Street, the Anne Haskins Center in Bloomingdale, and the Markland-Hides Center in Geneva. The applicant is present should you have any questions. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. Subject to conditions outlined within your packet.
I'll move approval, subject to the conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Subject to conditions, any questions for Mr. Malat or the applicant? Ms., Ms. Rauschenberger?
No, again, you know, we have, we have a great need in this country for these types of facilities and to support, um, children and adults with disabilities. So, thank you for your work, and, um, you know, Elgin is a, a, um, welcoming community, so, welcome.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Item three is consideration of petition 0, uh, 04-22, 168 East Highland Avenue, conditional use for a planned development for the expansion of the existing commercial event space within the existing building. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located along the north side of Highland Avenue between Douglas and Spring Street. Here is Highland, Douglas, and Spring. This is the city's Spring Street parking deck. The tower building, post office, City Hall surface parking lot, and City Hall is located towards the top. The applicant requests approval of an expansion to the Highland Loft Event Space, which currently occupies the entire third floor of the R.R. Donnelly Building at 168 East Highland Avenue, to also include the entire second floor and a portion of the first floor. The proposed second-floor space would have the same setup as the existing third-floor space. It has high ceilings, exposed brick in the loft style look desirable in the event venue market. The applicant would rent the facility for various types of events, including weddings, corporate parties, birthday parties, fundraisers, networking events, nonprofit and promotional events, and various other social events. The first-floor space would fill the need for a much smaller venue space for only 10 to 80 persons. This space would be mainly used for showers, rehearsal dinners, and corporate meetings. The applicant is available. Should you have any questions, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. Subject conditions outlined within your packet.
I'll move approval, subject to the conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Subject to conditions, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved nine zero. Item four is a public hearing of petitions 06-22 and 07-22, uh, at 3451 Boz Road, amendment to the annexation agreements and map amendment to the planned development, uh, to construct a 4.5-megawatt ground-mounted solar farm. Declare the public hearing open. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is located at the southwest corner of Boz and Nolan Roads. Here is Boz, this is Nolan. The Boz Creek Country Club subdivision is located here toward the lower left. Mid-America Green Energy requests approval of a 4.5-megawatt solar farm on the mostly vacant 30-acre property that was annexed in 2003. It was contemplated for single-family residential development at the time, but specific plans were never developed. The property has long been encumbered by the railroad tracks along the south lot line, and the Commonwealth Edison, uh, Power Company constructed 190-foot-tall, high-power transmission lines between the tracks and the south lot line in 2016. The applicant proposes installing almost 12,500 ground-mounted solar modules on about 19 and a half acres of the property. To provide a sense of scale, this solar farm would generate nearly three and a half times more energy than that created by the 2018 rooftop installation at 1111 Davis Street. You may recall that that installation was the first community solar site in the state. Access to the facility would come from the existing driveway off of Nolan Road. All curb cuts along Boz Road would be removed. The operation is monitored remotely, and employee visits are intended only once a month for any routine maintenance and troubleshooting. The panels would connect directly to the ComEd power lines along the south lot line. Mid-America Green Energy would construct a 10-foot-wide, multipurpose path along the south side of Boz Road, contributing to the larger planned regional bike network. The applicant would also dedicate land to King County for future Boz Road widening and to the city for any future improvements necessary to Nolan Road. The entire solar farm would be enclosed with an eight-foot-high solid fence. A 20-foot-wide natural landscape buffer along Boz and Nolan would further screen the facility. The zoning ordinance also requires that the panels be treated with an anti-reflective coating. The applicant is reviewing options for ground cover and has stated that their preference is to provide plantings that will provide a positive pollinator habitat. Staff has forwarded information to the applicant about the United States Department of Agriculture's Pollinator Habitat Initiative, which provides financial incentives to support pollinators, as well as information about the State of Illinois Pollinator Friendly Solar Site Designation. The applicant is present should you have any questions. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. Subject to conditions outlined within your packet.
Questions for Mr. Malat or the applicant?
Move for approval, subject to the...
Uh, it's not, it's a public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Any questions for Mr. Malat at this time or the applicant? Ms. Rauschenberger?
Um, I, I'll just say, um, on behalf of the sustain, the Elgin Sustainability Commission, um, we discussed this, um, project last night, and, um, there was, um, great support and enthusiasm for, um, such a facility in Elgin, and we didn't even know about the pollinator plans, so, that's great, thank you.
Uh, anybody in the audience wish to comment? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this, uh, project that's, uh, gonna be, uh, added to Boz Road? Uh, seeing nobody at the podium, I declare the public hearing closed. Takes us to, uh, item five is the consideration of the petitions 06-22 and 07-22 for 340, 3451 Boz Road Amendment to Annexation Agreements and Map Amendment to the Planned Development to Construct a 4.5-megawatt Ground-Mounted Solar Farm. Mr. Malat?
Nothing additional to answer.
Okay, now it's open for discussion from the council and for a recommendation.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
Um, I, I just wanna say how exciting this is for Elgin. Um, I know our sustainability, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Rauschenberger, mentioned, uh, that this is right in line with what the Sustainability Commission has, uh, been working towards, and the work that they do. Really appreciate the, the extra thought given to, um, putting in plants that are pollinator-friendly. Uh, I, I think that's a nice touch. The only thing I couldn't find is the eight-foot fence that's going to be erected around the facility. What is, it, it says it's a solid fence. What is that made out of?
It's made of a composite material, it's a Trex. Uh, for commercial applications, it has a 10- to 12-year warranty with it, so it'll be, it'll be absolutely zero maintenance, except perhaps having to hit it with a hose. Uh, if you reuse that same material in a residential setting, you get a warranty that goes well over 20 years, so it's a very durable material, uh, so that we won't have any maintenance issues in, in, in any time in the near future.
So, it's, it's meant for security and...
And screening.
And screening.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Good?
Um, thank you for the presentation, and, uh, just out of curiosity and for context, um, the amount of energy that's gonna be generated from this field, is there a sense of how much that would offset? I know it doesn't plug straight into our grid, you know, it gets mixed into the system, but just for educational purposes, do we know how much of a bite that would take out of our energy consumption in Elgin?
I think at this point, we're gonna need to call the applicant up to maybe give us some, some context, if they're, if they can give us that sort of sense. Get out over my skis, I mean...
Yeah, I'm not asking for exact, but just ballpark, so we can all, as a community, start to understand, um, you know, how these types of sources offset.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you, and thank you for the kind word. We're super excited about it as well. It's an initiative of ours, and Mid-America Green Energy is an offshoot of Mid-America Asset Management, Inc., and if you've seen us, we do a lot of retail, real estate around the area, and we're looking to build these out locally as well for our clients, so, um, get an idea of what it will offset. Five, a five-megawatt farm, that should offset about 1,000 average single-family homes usage for the year. Um, so roughly about 1,000 homes using, um, 10,000-ish kilowatt-hours per year, something like that, 10,000 to 12,000.
Okay, and I think we've got, what, about 30,000 homes in Elgin? 35? Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to provide that context. I'm interested personally, and hopefully others are as well, but thank you very much.
Anything else for the applicant while they're up here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Malat?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Shaw?
Just, just curious, any feedback from residents that, uh, through the planning and zoning process that we should be aware of, or, or any feedback that we received?
Uh, there was only one person who came to the public hearing, and that person was very supportive of, of primarily that this was not going to be additional single-family homes or any, or any housing, for that matter, generating trips on Boz and Nolan Road.
Well, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Congratulations. Uh, consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Then moved and seconded for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. At this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, back to the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn back to the Committee of the Whole. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Uh, entertain a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to reconvene. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are back in session. I believe we're on item I, Mr. Manager.
I agree, this is a proposed amendment to the existing professional services agreement with Kerns &amp; West, uh, to serve as the group facilitator for the Community Task Force on Policing. The city council in June 2020 first approved the creation of a community task force on policing and directed staff to develop and issue an RFQ for hiring a third-party facilitator. Um, council members Powell and Shaw served as liaisons to the task force and conducted the initial review of the four responses to the RFQ that was ultimately issued in September 2020. After interviews, Kerns &amp; West's team was identified as the best qualified to serve as the city's group facilitator, and an agreement on the amount of $160,000 was executed for the performance of their services. In September 2021, an ordinance establishing the 18-member task force was approved. That ordinance also, um, requires recommendations and a final report to be submitted to the city council by June 1st of this year. In late March of this year, Kerns &amp; West advised that the hourly billings for its original $160,000 budget would be exhausted. That original budget contemplated a total of 24 task force meetings, and up to date, Kerns &amp; West facilitated almost 40 task force and task force subcommittee meetings. Kerns &amp; West is estimating, based on the work completed to date, approximately, um, an additional, excuse me, 20 task force subcommittee meetings and seven additional task force meetings will be required to complete the work. Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes. Motion's approved 9-0. Entertain a motion to reconvene. At this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn back to the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second to adjourn back to the committee of the whole. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Obstain. Miscellaneous business.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I want to acknowledge the process's time and effort and thank everyone involved, the city staff, the task force members, the facilitation team, Chief Lally, and the police department. I watched the task force meetings and subcommittee meetings and closely followed the project. I continue to support not dedicating resources towards this process. On February 21 and March 10, 2021, I voted against hiring Kerns and West as a task facilitator. Kerns and West and their facilitators do not appear to have educated or informed themselves about EPD and the department's work. I'll add that on March 10, 2022, I found the task force conversation and comments regarding military members to be reckless, offensive, and dangerous. As an honorably discharged sergeant of the U.S. Army and many other veterans, we took offense to this. As a spectator, I found it frustrating that some involved don't seem to know about the services, processes, and training the Elgin Police Department utilizes. Many of these meetings to refer to police departments in other communities or situations are more than 20 years ago. I had expectations that the facilitators would have more knowledge of the Elgin Police Department and that they would provide direction to the committee regarding other departments, best practices, police contracting, training, and union negotiations. Again, there seems to be a disconnect. As council members, we need to be aware of national problems plaguing police departments. As Elgin City Council members, we need to recognize and applaud the Elgin Police Department when this council sits up here and leads a public to think our police force is substandard, untrained, and they aren't addressing mental health crisis, that we don't have the internal investigation processes, that we don't have layers of oversight already in place. We are setting the community up for recruitment retention and morale problems in our police force. As leaders of this community, we need to be honest in representing tremendous police force that we have here in Elgin. And I thank Chief Lally for her leadership. I would reconsider if the task force had constructive criticism. That's what we need, not destructive criticism. Just yesterday, I know that our friend in Peoria was a commander here, very liked by the community, is now a police chief. He went ahead and acknowledged our police department, like they've been acknowledged not only in the state, but nationally for things that they do. And I wasn't there, I believe Chief Lally was, and if I can ask somebody to explain what happened on acknowledging the CCSU that Elgin has already had for at least four years. Chief Lally, anybody?
The chief was there, that makes.
Thank you, councilmember. Just to kind of fill in the blanks for you, so Commander Ettriria, who's now Chief Ettriria in Peoria, he has been working on some legislation with some state representatives to pass a bill and subsequently funding, getting some funding for a co-response model. So he's been working on it for the past few months, and so it came to fruition yesterday with the governor signing the legislation. And he invited me to come down there to give accolades to where he got the ideas from, which is the Elgin Police Department and things that we've been doing here for the past three years. So I appreciate the fact that he remembered us. And, you know, he's an amazing, they're lucky to have him down there. And so it was an honor to go down there and to, you know, be present when that bill was signed and to see that other communities are doing the things that we, you know, we are doing and have been doing for about three years. So it was a great honor, a great thing for the city. And so it was a good day.
Agreed, because he's a product of our community. He's a product of our police department. And, you know, I'm not saying Elgin PD is a perfect organization. I'm not saying that. There's always room for improvement in all we do. We need to have open conversations about policing and make sure Elgin monitors and maintains the highest standards. The spending of $160,000 with the potential of even more on a consultant and the amount of time our staff invested in this task force takes away from other real needs in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Powell?
Thank you, Mayor. As one of the city council liaisons to the task force, first of all, I want to acknowledge that there are several task force members in the audience today. If you would please stand or wave your hand as I say your name. We have Chairperson LaJoel Quigler. We have Vice Chair Ishmael Cordova. We have Mr. Parliamentarian Pastor Walter Blalark. We have our communications, forgot what the actual title is, but Shimon Blanchard. Thank you, Shimon. We have Denise Haven, and I see Sherman Blair here as well. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Chief Lally, for attending all of these meetings, you and your team. The 18 people who make up this task force have put in a whole lot of work. They put in a lot of time, a lot of effort. And also, I don't want to neglect to mention Dr. Joe Horath with Kerns and West. He's the director of the Institute for Policy and Civic Engagement with UIC, and he is with the current part of the Kerns and West team. So thanks, Joe, for being here today and fighting the traffic coming in from Chicago to be here with us. Councilman Shaw and I, as well as other members of our staff, I mentioned Chief Lally and her team. We've been to just about all of these meetings. It's a big pot. It's a big pot of stuff to unravel and talk about. And I think we didn't realize until we got together how big that pot was. And while I do believe we got a slow start, the momentum is here and it's moving. And the task force has made it a point to talk about how much they want to continue with that momentum. It's, you know, and as we look at this work, the topics are sensitive, and they can be messy and uncomfortable, but we're making progress. The topics that we're talking about are not unique to Elgin. I do want to say that. They're not unique to the city of Elgin, but they are things that are specific to things that we can actually impact in our community. None of this is to say that we have a bad police department. In fact, several members of this task force have complimented our police department and talked about the wonderful things that we have done and the progress that we have made over the years. So for folks that want to push that narrative, that's bull. I want to talk about the innovative things that we have done in Elgin. We were one of the first in this region to have body cameras. One of our neighbors to the south, that's a whole lot larger than us, is just now getting their body cams. We piloted that years ago, and it's been in place here for a long time. We've also led the charge on our CCSU unit, and that's something we just talked about in terms of our co-responder program with providing a mental health professionals to go out on certain calls. That's huge. So those are just some of the things, some of the things, that we do extremely well, and I'm really proud of. I've always talked about our community policing program, our rope program. Those are things that we take a lot of pride in, in our community. So I want to publicly say that, because I don't think, I think that gets lost sometimes. When people say, well, why do we have a task force? We have a task force because there are still things that we can do better. There are things that we've heard from certain segments of our community that are a problem and have been a problem over the years that we can do better at. And quite frankly, I see this task force hopefully bringing forth recommendations that not only make Elgin Police Department better, but can potentially serve as a model for police departments across the country, because we have been that trendsetter, and I want us to continue to set that trend. So I say all of that to support the continued work of the task force. I know people, it's easy to look at the dollar amount and poke holes at that. We have a 280, $290 million budget. That's a drop in the bucket. And these are important issues. These are important issues in our community. And to me, it's the next cycle in our community policing model. Our community policing model that we take so much pride in has been kind of one-sided right now. And that's not a criticism, but it's been the police coming out into our community and doing things in our community. But I see this next aspect of our community policing model that we have as the community having some say in how they're actually policed. Imagine that. It is full circle community policing. That's what I see the work of this task force being. And for anyone who wants to think about it being negative, I don't see it being negative. We are going to continue with the work. There will be community input. There will be police input before all of that comes back before this council for recommendations. So I support us moving forward. Like I said, it hasn't been perfect, but nothing is when you're dealing with stuff of this magnitude. I know that our chair wants to make a couple of comments, but I wanted to just say my piece as one of the city council liaisons to the task force. And I'm really, really proud of the time and effort that folks have put in and look forward to continue to working with you.
Anything else from the council? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. So first and foremost, of course, thank you, everybody who put time into this. You know, coming into this role on council, part of that was sparked by serving five years on the Strategic Plan Committee. And being in that process and kind of having it end without any clarity rubbed me the wrong way. You know, I look at residents across our community, and, you know, we expect them to pay taxes at a base level. We want them to vote. We want them to volunteer their time. And when you get all those in one person, you know, you want to hold them up in the community. So thank you so much for putting your time in. I know, as an observer, the meetings were tense at points, and they were hard to rein in. That was a term I heard a lot while watching those videos. And so I know it for myself, it's also tricky, because myself and Councilmember Thorne are stepping into this process partially that was already moving. So sitting back, I had to rely on watching the videos and speaking with the liaisons. And like they have mentioned, I echo some of the frustrations that Councilmember Martinez mentioned, but also some of the sympathies that we have, just because we walked into this in a pandemic. I think anybody who's watching these videos saw a pretty stark difference from remote meetings to in-person meetings. We're all trying to get used to this dynamic online, just how to communicate, the pauses in between, who can talk, when they can talk, regulating your emotions in those environments. It's a little bit easier in person, so I was happy to see that. However, getting from the big picture of the group down to the small micro details of it, what I'm curious to figure out tonight is the decision to have subcommittees without facilitators. What does that mean for the budget going forward with Kerns and West? Is there a desire, or is there a willingness within the committee or within the task force to meet in person as a team, but have the facilitators attend remotely? And I also am curious about reducing the size of the task force, because I know there's some concerns about going through the summer, meeting that quorum, because the group is so big. If there's a few members out, it makes it more difficult. So is that something that is on the table as well? And lastly, I would like to also hear some details about how this community input process is supposed to take place. What does that look like? And I know there's been a lot of talk about timelines. Obviously, we would have liked to have the recommendations by June. We're here talking about it September 1. And, you know, in talking with the liaisons to this group, they basically said, hey, if you want to get this done, you know, we believe sticking with the facilitator that started this is the best route to go, because you're not losing that momentum. And that was the other word that came up over and over and over again in the task force, is keeping this momentum going. So if there's any details that could be provided right now, I'd be curious to hear those.
Anything else about this? Somebody else gets, you have to wait your turn now. Anybody else down here?
I'll just answer this question.
And Ms. Rocheberger?
Well, I would like to hear some of the details that Councilperson Good suggested. But I just want to say in general that citizens' task force, task forces aren't perfect organizations or processes, or, I mean, these are citizens without, you know, specific training and any, you know, point, except that they're representing our community. And I thank them for doing that. And I know we've had many citizen task force, and they're an important part of our community. Consultants are not perfect either. You know, every organization, you know, there's not one perfect one out there. And I know the amount of time that has been put into this, not only time and energy, but passion. And I think this is what makes this a very difficult, difficult topic on behalf of the community and on behalf of the police force. Passion's not always easy to manage. I know I sat in on some, a few of these sessions, just a few, online on Zoom, and I heard, you know, what the passion coming out of our community members and police force. And so that's a hard job for a facilitator or a consultant to engage and move forward in a good direction. I, you know, I commend everybody, really, for the time and the passion. I know Councilperson Powell and Councilperson Shaw have had lots of discussions about this. They want it to be successful. We want to move it forward. And, you know, no one said the process was going to take X amount of time. I mean, there's no law, or there's no, you know, mathematical equation for how this should be successful, nor dollar amount. I think that, as everyone said, the momentum is there. We've come this far. $95,000 or whatever the cost is, is, again, small in the big picture of a better community and a better police force and a better community relationship with the police force. So I support this, and I think we need to look at the long-term, big picture here. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
I was going to wait till last. I didn't ask to speak right now, but I'll go ahead and take it.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody else?
Let him talk. We'll let Dixon go.
I'll take it. All right. Cool. Thank you. I first wanted to say thank you to the task force members for showing up here this evening to hear about such an important item. Also want to say thank you to Kerns and West for yourself for showing up. I appreciate it. I've been able to watch the meetings online, as many of the council people here have. And I've had a lot of conversations about this over the months. I want to say thank you to Chief Lally. I think that Chief Lally has really demonstrated what a leader should look like in an environment like this. It's not easy. And she has done an excellent, excellent job. And she has even, I say restrained, but that's probably not the correct word, but she has held it together. And very professional, even when things got sticky. So thank you, Chief Lally. And thank you to the department, too, that you lead. And I know everyone is in support of this initiative. And so there's a lot, and I'm trying not to repeat some of the things that have already been said, but I just might. So I'll just start here. Don't be foolish in believing or drinking the Kool-Aid that because we, somebody in this subject, have something critical to say about policing, that you then hate all police or that you hate the EPD. That's a fool's trap. That's a fool's game. That makes absolutely no sense. I even hate that we have to continue to say that. Oh, we don't hate the police. We just, you know, da-da-da, da-da-da. All right. You know, it goes without saying, is my point. Nobody here hates the police. All right. What the task force and what I think this community is ultimately saying is that we realize that there are some issues, and we want to figure out a way to make our community better. That's what we're supposed to do as community members. The money that we're spending on this, I really see as an investment. These dollars are really an investment in our community, because it's going to save us money in the long run. It may prevent manpower and investigations going forward. It may prevent possible lawsuits in the future. There's a plethora of ways that this money is actually, we get a return on the investment. So, you know, although it's always hard spending any money, if you, you know, were here for the other items on the agenda, we spend a lot of money, and we don't bet an eye, you know? So this is in line with what we do on a normal basis. It's just that the subject is a little contentious. So I'm going to be supporting this. I think that the meetings up until this point, well, the last two meetings have been great. And I think a lot of that has to do with it being in person. We got a lot done in these last two meetings. Prior to that, via Zoom, it was difficult. And some of the meetings were probably terrible. I'm just going to tell you, they were probably not good. We spent a lot of time going down pathways that we probably should not be going down in this, in that type of environment. But in person, they've been really good. So, you know, I have no qualms about going, you know, going forward about this. We do have a deadline, September. know, going forward about this. We do have a deadline, September. It is over the summer months. So, that means that people are going to have to be in place. We're going to have to have quorums to make sure all these meetings get done, so that there's no possibility of things being extended. Beyond that point, we want to get this done as soon as we possibly can. And that's going to mean some sacrifices from all of the parties involved. So, I look forward to that. I'm in favor of reducing the numbers. So, I think we're, what, 18? And reducing that down to 16, because it's my understanding that a couple of people at least have stepped away, right? So, that will help if we do that in the quorum numbers. And so, Councilman Good brought that up, but that's what he was alluding to. So, that would probably be a good move for us to do, so that we can get that quorum number down and risk not having a quorum. So, you know, with that being said, all the other points, especially by Councilwoman Powell, are points, are views that I also share. So, I'm not going to repeat those. But I just want to say, good luck. God bless. Godspeed. You know, you are being supported. We want you to get this done. We're here for you. And thank you for all of your time.
Okay. Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do hope that Mr. Shaw will speak, even though he's absent visually, but he was there. So, I think it would be important. But I want to start by thanking my co-council of expressing their opinions. And that's what we all have. We all have our opinions. Everyone in this audience has opinions. And that's what's wonderful about this world. And I respect them for having theirs and for how they see things and what they believe in. But I think there's a lot of people that would see a task force is assigned to a situation where there's an issue, where there's a problem. And I think our police force is stellar. They're second to none. I commend Councilwoman Powell on complimenting them on a few specific things that sets them apart. Because I thought of that this morning too, when I read in the front page of the paper that Aurora Police Department's now getting body cams. And we were the first suburb for all police to have them. And we've been having them for four years. We're ahead of everybody. I think we have a great police department. And we'll look at what Eric Etcheverria's just done. And incidentally, my colleague Rose left out one wonderful thing about him. He's also a veteran. He was in the military before he joined the police department. I watched a number of task force on Zoom. I too, like everyone up here, thank you for the time you put into it. Everybody's busy. Everybody has their personal lives, their schedule, their work, and their hobbies in their life. And now, they've changed that to be part of a new meeting group and something they believe in. Once again, so that they can engage and express their opinion, and hopefully, express it enough to teach people and to learn from them as well. But I think that when we have something like this, we're, there's a lot of people that are going to be thinking about the fact that there's an impression that it's not a good enough department, and that's why there's a task force. I'm not saying that's the case, but there certainly are people that are going to think that way. And I would think that if I was going to be a member that wanted to look at what they're doing and what they're doing wrong, or what can they do better, I would want to have been engaging with them. I liked one thing that, more than one thing, but one thing that Councilwoman Powell said is that the police will be involved. Well, that's a, that's a new one, because that's been one thing all this time that wasn't supposed to happen. And I thought that was very unfair. That's what it was said from the beginning, that they didn't want any police to be involved. I'd also heard that a number of police officers offered one-on-one talks with task force members, but not one of them took them up on that. Not true? Then I take that back. Okay, thank you. And incidentally, Mr. Blalock, I grew up with Carla and Kelvin.
Oh, wow. You're young.
Well, I don't feel young. But I also know that, how many task force members have been, have attended the Elgin Citizens Police Academy, so that they know what police go through? How many of them have been on a ride-along? I know that if I was on the task force, those are two things I'd do immediately, so that I know what it's like to be in their shoes, or at least as close as I could. I value the police. I thank them. They keep us safe. And I think we have a great police department. I know that just earlier today, our state representative, Anna Moller, she put on a program at the Gail Born Library. And in her program, she included an Elgin policeman to do a presentation to show the community, to engage in the community. And a couple of the things that I saw on some of the meetings, as Rose mentioned, were disturbing. One, that task force member didn't think military people were suited. Now, of course, I'm not saying that everyone feels that way, but there's a task force member that felt that way. They presented it. They're trying to express their opinion to change or alter yours. That's because that's their belief, certainly not mine. And another one, I heard someone say they didn't approve of the police being in the schools. And I'm, I'm just overwhelmed at that, when I read that DeKalb is putting on more police officers because of the problems. Wheaton, the good town of Wheaton, doesn't have police in schools. And I found out that the schools call the police department every day, every day. These are just some of the things. It's, it's hard for me to think that we've had all this time, and, you know, I can't thank you enough for putting it in, but I haven't seen anything from the task force showing value that demonstrates a quarter of a million dollars in the citizens' money, the citizens of our town. And I'm sure all of you, you're hoping you get it, but you have to also realize there's plenty of people out there that are going to feel that way. They're happy with the police. Last year, there was that survey done, the survey in the city of Elgin. 3,500 people participated across the city. And one of the highest ranking points that they gave was the value of the Elgin Police Department. Now, that's the opposite of people thinking, well, if there was a problem with it, if it was way down on the list, I would sure think differently about, hey, a task force sounds like a good idea. Sounds like a good idea. Maybe that would be worthy to see, why is it that so many people are not holding the police department in high regard? But that wasn't the case. It's hard for me to justify spending that money on the situation when I don't see any, anything from the task force showing value. I see where Councilwoman Powell says we're making great strides, and the last couple of meetings have been great, and we're face-to-face. But it's all the money and the time without actually some specifics. The only thing I liked that is notable is that she brought up that police will finally be involved, which to me, was a no-brainer. But I was just shocked that all this time, that was really the plan that they weren't allowed to be. So, I'm really torn at whether to, I didn't agree with it in the beginning, but I gave it a chance. I've listened, and I watched a number of the meetings. Now, I haven't seen the last two live ones, I'll admit that. But it's just hard for me to justify spending money for the community from so many people that are happy with our department to scrutinize, rather than compliment, a department that I think is second to none and is an example setter. They're a winning organization, not an organization that needs changes. I just, if there were some changes presented tonight that showed weaknesses, boy, I'd be open to it. And I think anybody watching this video and maybe other people up here would be too. It's just hard for me to support this at this stage. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, I'm looking for you.
Yeah, Mayor. I just, I guess the one, one thought process is maybe we have the task force members that are there, make their statements, and maybe Kearns and West as well. I've just been thinking, maybe I might want to respond to some of those statements as well.
Okay, then we'd ask Ms. Krieger to come up. She's going to be the spokesperson for the people that are here.
Good evening, Council, and everyone that's here. And I definitely want to say thank you to all of my support team, that we all work together in trying to make sure this task force that you all set up is doing what it's supposed to do. We definitely understand and agree with you for the most part, from September to probably in the last two months, that it was kind of crazy, to say the least. And we were all trying to figure it out. Not only trying to definitely figure out what we were exactly doing, we were also trying to figure out each other, learning each other, and also learning about each other and our experiences. And there's a lot of them. 18 is a lot of people. Also, you have the ages that are there too. I am a lifelong member here. I was born and raised here in Elgin. My uncle, this is, Walter Blalock is my uncle, for all of you that don't know. So, I'm part of the Blalock clan as well. And he's been here most of his life as well. So, we've seen the changes in Elgin. And it's, it's perfectly good for you all to state, you know, all of the good that you've seen with the Elgin Police Department and the changes that have been made in the last three years. That's wonderful. The unfortunate part about that is with us being lifetime members here, or living here in the community, that wasn't what we felt. That wasn't what we experienced. So, we're not saying at this point, in regards to the EPD, and I also want to say, Chief Lally has been awesome. She is one of the most awesome ladies I have ever come across in my life, just to let you know that. And her, working with her has been so awesome. And I don't know, sir, where you stated that the police have not been involved from day one. From day one, we have been communicating with them from day one. There has been constant communication, constant, the whole thing of it, of us trying to work together to find the best practices for our police department. That is what we have been trying to do, to make sure that everyone is seen here and treated fairly. That is what we are trying to make sure of. And the wonderful part, we've talked with the police officers, one-on-one. I sat in this exact room and talked with the police officers. We hugged the police officers, something I would have never thought I would have done, you know? And you have to understand, you know, where you may state that, you know, knowing certain things about the police department. Well, coming from the black community, there's a lot of things that we don't know in reference to the chart, the changes and things that are happening, because we stay as far away from them as possible. Because to us, sometimes it feels as a threat. So, we're trying to change all of that. We're trying to change all of that, as well as I said, we're making our relationships. Because remember, we're going back into the community. The people are looking at us. So, what we are doing, it matters. It matters. No, Kearns and West may have not been the best choice. We didn't choose. But we're working with what we have. And in my life, that's what I've learned to do, work with what you got. And that's what we're doing. And I think moving forward, the best thing I think may have happened is that they did run out of the money, because we did get a chance as a whole force to come together ourselves, because we know what we want to do. The passion, it's here. Because this is, we love our community. This is what we want to do. So, we're putting everything our best for. So, regardless of whatever, Kearns and West definitely come back. We already know what we need to do. We know how to work with them. So, in regards to your stating of us subtracting some of the members, to my understanding at this point, I believe it's like three that we're down at this point. So, that's moving, you know? Those who care and who this really means something to, we're here. We're here. And we're not going anywhere. We've spent a lot of time doing this, and to walk away from it, it doesn't benefit the community. It doesn't benefit none of you, to be honest with you. Because to me, of what you've done, you, you actually come out, and to me, you are innovators, saying that you actually think we all mean something. That's an awesome thing to say, considering where we're at today. That's an awesome thing for the council to sit here and tell everybody in the community, you matter. So, yes, this does matter, that we move forward. Yes, it does matter that they get the money, so we can complete our jobs of what we're doing. We're not that far from what we're doing. We're not that far from it. And now, we're all working together? This is awesome. It's an amazing feat that we're doing right now. So, I'm asking that you please continue, let us continue the work. If there's any questions, please feel free to.
Thank you. Would Kearns and West like to make a quick statement? Very brief, please. And I have a question for you, before you're done.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilpeople. I can't hear myself, so I'm assuming you all can hear me. I just want to acknowledge what a privilege it has been to work in a facilitation role with this committee. From the beginning, I think it was remarkable that you all took this work on and put up, put forth an RFP for a facilitator to come in and work with these, with these five folks here. I will say, the process has not been perfect, as has been acknowledged. There's really three things that have been trying to happen at the same time, that really been, I would say, challenges for this kind of process. And I don't think that would be unique to Elgin. I think you would come into that regardless of where, where you were taking on this work. And I think you would see that probably being even more of a challenge than what I'm about to describe to you in other communities. When you were trying to educate folks about the Elgin Police Department, about its policies, we all were learning together. I don't think any task force member came onto this committee, into this role, fully, you know, aware and informed of everything the police department was doing. Obviously, they were selected because of some past experience with this issue. But there's that education process that has to happen. There's a deliberation process that has to happen. Mayor Captain, I was watching the first part of the meeting that you were managing with envy, just rattling through the agenda items. And City Manager Kozel, you keeping everybody on track. That's wonderful. That is not at all how these kind of committee meetings need to be happening. Need to allow for the space, need to, for people to be honest and comfortable. If you don't ever have those honest conversations, we're going to be nice and cordial to each other, maybe? And then, we're going to go off and back to our comfy situations, not really addressing people's misunderstandings or differences in opinions, or just being given the space to share something that was really painful for them, that happened to them in some past experience. So, you have to have time for that deliberation. Then you have to have time for a recommendation. Okay, so, we've heard from folks. We now understand how the police, the police department is oriented towards these issues. And I'll just- issues. And I'll just commend Chief Lally again, as everyone has, to say, this process in Elgin has been, believe it or not, smooth relative to how it might have been in other communities where you have maybe a police chief who's not as committed to or as open and involved even directly from day one in this process. So when you're trying to do all three things at the same time, within a time constraint, it can get murky. It can get murky. And I think what it took us time to do on this boat was to kind of get all that together and get it kind of oriented and pointing in the right way. I think, sorry, I think my phone is causing the feedback. I think it's not just the fact that the meetings are in person as to why we have momentum now. I think that's part of it, a big part of it. But I think the other part is we put in the time already to do a little bit of homework on issues, to get to know each other's opinions, and figure out maybe where the lane is for some consensus on recommendations. And so we're at that point now. And just that we're at that point, we had this pause. So that's, just wanted to start out with that as a critical reflection. I know there have been some other questions that I had noted I can respond to, but I know, Mayor, you said you had one.
Yeah. And my question's pretty germane to what's happened here. And I've heard a number of people say that this group, so I'll use the term wandered in the desert for a couple, three months before they got started. And it's a facilitator's job or the person that's leading the thing to try to keep them in focus and on focus. If I vote to renew this, what guarantee do I have that that will not happen again? How are you going to keep them on focus? And I'm going to have some recommendations here as to how to do that, to push this along. You've got to keep people, you have a goal. The part of this was not to fix the Elgin Police Department, it was to make it better. And that was the goal of this thing from day one. And I think that got lost in the desert with people. And I think that's an important point here. From moving on from now, I want to see us make a better police department. And those recommendations that come back to us should be looking at doing that. How are you going to do this? And how are you going to lead this any differently in the next two or three months than you did the first six or seven months?
Great question. I think from the start of this next phase, we have a highly detailed work plan. We also know what the issues are already, whereas when we were starting, we didn't, that was part of the process, was unearthing and prioritizing what those issues are. So we're past that point. Now, the rest of the work that remains is about recommendations on known topics. So we can focus. We can focus on specific topics. If the committee gets off track, we now have license to say, hey, folks, that's not one of our priorities right now. We've already been to that place. And we said, this issue is a topic, stay with us here, right? And we're trying to get to those recommendations. So we have much more leeway and much more license as facilitators to guide that process with a little firmer hand, with a little more establishing guardrails than what we did at the beginning. And also learning, frankly, from our experience the first time, as you pointed out, the first three months. So we have that work plan that comes along with this proposal. Obviously, the timeline when that work plan was developed was different. It was for a June 1 end date. Given that we had the pause, trying to get these meetings scheduled and everything else for the council to review our proposal, that shifted to September 1. That's actually great. I think that's really helpful to give us the time that we need without forcing committee members to rush and acknowledging the challenges that we might be facing over the summer with a quorum and other sorts of slowdowns with scheduling that happened in the summer.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, you had a chance to speak. You heard the presentations, please?
Yeah, just a couple of my thoughts. You know, the agenda on the item before is to amend the agreement with Kerns and West. In my view, though, it's a broader decision. The decision is we either hold true to the original ordinance to wrap up the task force by June 1 without a facilitation team, or we extend Kerns and West as a facilitation team and thereby adjust the end date. If there's a desire to continue the work of the task force, I do not believe it wise to switch facilitation teams. My original justification for supporting the formation of this task force, that we would, in light of the national conversation, inspect our own department to ensure that disparities among impacting people of color were not present in our community. This forum was to allow community members to weigh in and then ensure that we weren't missing something. One of my biggest concerns is that I've heard solutions thus far. But one of the issues that we're trying to solve, this really needs to be a focus for me going forward. If there's a recommendation, there needs to be an appropriate evidence of the problem that this recommendation is trying to solve. And that's a little bit of a gap right now, and that's a concern. People might be surprised, but at this juncture, it's less about the money to me. And that's probably knocking some people off their chairs. But to me, it's the timeline. It's the tone of the meetings. It's the impact on the police department. It's the extra workload on staff. I've mentioned this to a number of people, that I compare the task force and the way that it's currently functioned as almost like an audit on our police department. And for those of you that have ever been through an audit, it's not a very pleasant process. The goal of when you're audited is to finish the audit as quick as you can, because it's stressful, it's not pleasant, and it's just, it's a challenge because of the timeline and the focus that you need to have around that. And for months, we've put our police department through that. And I, you know, I understand it's a part of their job to continue to be scrutinized, and they get that. But I think we've really amped it up with this police task force. I believe, as of late, though, it has been a much more cooperative process. One of the things I will stipulate, though, is I highly recommend or would like to almost require our task force members to take advantage of our roundtable meetings that our police officers have offered to have with them. We've had a small number of them take advantage of very informal roundtable conversations. Pizza was even provided, to take advantage of that. Because it's through those types of conversations that I think we saw the most eye-opening and the best outcomes from some of our task force members. I do want to concur with Councilwoman Martinez. You know, as a father of an active-duty Marine, I had to bite my lip a number of times. It's, you know, my goal for my son to go into the Marines was, you know, not that he would come out as a white supremacist. It was made very clearly that that was, you know, a high probability. That's a big chance. That's tough to hear that. And I think we, just as task force members, they need to be cognizant of the place that they're in as well. They need to have some self-policing of their own ideas and thoughts and words as well. We do as council members and as an appointed body, they need to do that as well, because they're reflecting our community. I get that this is a very controversial vote. I will say, in my conversation with Councilwoman Powell today, I did inform her that I would not torpedo this effort, that I would support the extension of that. That has not changed. I will support that, and I'm committed to doing that. However, I do feel that I'm going to need to be more involved to ensure that this ends up smoothly. And I will not extend it past the September 1. Like I said, I'm more concerned about the timeline. I'm concerned about the work effort by staff. And so there are things that I will not change. This is the final amendment. This is not like, we're going to amend this, and then we're going to get to September, and, you know, we're going to amend this again. This is it, in my viewpoint. And so I will be supportive of the amendment. I do think the group has turned the corner as far as being able to work together and be more productive. I think we started, the team has started to gel. But I think there needs to be a reconciliation, or there needs to be an awareness on the things that are being presented by the task force actually have the merit and the ability to actually be passed by this body here. And so that, you know, I shared some of those tips at our last in-person task force meeting as well, is that, you know, focus on the things that you, that have the ability to be passed by the city council, you know? Coming to us and telling us that you don't want school resource officers and spending a lot of time on that. Well, to me, that's great that you have that, but we spent a lot of time already, you know, chewing on that and going over that back and forth, that, you know, focus on other things. And so there are some things that I think we need to do differently as far as where we're spending our time. I think also, we've talked a little bit about the formation of the group, with the subcommittees and the full committee, that I think it's going to be, I think it's wise that we collapse more things into the full committee quicker, so that we don't have as many back and forth, and then use valuable hours by our team from Kerns and West. So there's a number of things that we can do to make this better and to make a smooth landing. I'll also preface this, that the recommendations, I might not be very supportive of all the recommendations. And that each recommendation is going to have a different group of supporters by this board. And, you know, that's just, that's just the way it's going to be. But I will be supportive of finishing this process to get the remaining input from our task force and to formalize those recommendations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Stephan?
Yeah, I waited till the end, and I'll speak up.
Almost to the end.
Yes, I'll try to keep it short, too, because I've heard a lot of things said that I was going to make comments on, too. But let me cut to the end here and start off by saying I will support this for many of the reasons that have been brought up. But let me try to frame it in the way that our consultant, Mr. Horvath, has. And he's talked about education, deliberation, and then findings and recommendations, the three things that have to come out of this process. Sounds like there's been a lot of the first two, but we haven't gotten the third one. And I appreciate that we have committee members here, including the chair, the vice chair, the secretary, and the parliamentarian from this committee telling us they want to get this thing over the finish line. And I am going to give them that opportunity. I'm going to support giving them the opportunity to do that and bring us some findings and some recommendations, the end result that's supposed to come from this. But I wanted to back up. A lot has been said about our police department and the interaction with this committee. And one thing I want to stress is I appreciate, and I appreciate that Chief Lally's here. My experience with this police department is they've been very forward-looking, they've been very proactive. They have come up with solutions, honestly, without this council having to suggest them. They've come to us with ideas. You've heard of many of them tonight, body cameras. They went out and got the grant and came to us and did that. CCSU, things that haven't been mentioned, that certainly should be, is, you know, the pivot on training, mental health, emphasis on mental health. One that I've just had conversations with the chief on this last week, I'll bring up, which hasn't been mentioned yet, is the kind of the expose on the SROs and the writing tickets, the way that school districts have been kind of getting, skirting the state law prohibiting that by just pushing that off on SROs. And Chief and I have had some conversations on those, because that's a tough issue, and that has to be kind of confronted. But to the police department's credit, this police department's kind of pivoted away from that in the last year or so. And so my concerns about seeing U-46 with 79 tickets, turns out that none of them are from Elgin. So that was good to hear. The other thing is I had the wrong school district for Burlington Central. I get those mixed up. So, but that's an example. And she was patient and explained that, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the time taken to make sure that those kinds of things, those disparate outcomes, aren't happening here. So with all that said, I've heard lots of good comments. But I want to stop there and just say I'm going to support this. I want to get this done. I want to get the recommendations in. I want to see what this committee is going to present to us and give them the opportunity to finish their work. So, okay, that's it.
All right. Thank you. I've been making some notes here. I've been making some notes here. And we got a couple of issues that we're going to have to resolve. Just my comments, excuse me. Yeah, I'm pretty disappointed in the progress here. This has been going on since September 1, with the council accelerated to make this thing happen because the community wanted it done. Now we've bogged down. We're struggling along here. I understand that we started to make some progress. And I'll, having chaired every, virtually every city council meeting for the last two years, some virtual, some not, it is much more difficult to do them virtually than it is to sit here and look at people face-to-face and have a discussion. So I understand that. That's why I'm going to say I'm going to support this. And, but there needs to be some cleanup things done here. And there needs to be some guidance back to Kerns and West and to the committee. I'd like a report back in 60 days as to where you're at, back to the city council. I cannot remember any report back to the city council in the last six months. Mr. Dixon made a point, and I did see a number of these on video, and spent way too much time going down dead ends that were not germane to the goal that this committee was tasked. And that killed part of that time that you had. You used the time up. And we used up the money that we gave to Kerns and West doing that. So I think that would be something that this council should expect. 60-day progress report, unless the council would like to do something better, or Ms. Powell or Mr. Shaw would think something would be more appropriate. Do you think that's fair?
I think that's fair.
I do.
Okay. And that would be, I'll put the, okay, I'll give it, I'll look over to the calendar over here to tell me when that would be. So that will give us an update as to where this is going, talk about where you're at, what your recommendations look like there are, how you're going to flesh them out, and give us kind of a status report as to where this is going to go. And I understand, and there's a danger here. You're running into it now. The longer the, I've done this a number of times, the longer these things go on, people start to drift. And they're going to drift away from the committee. You started to see that. Three people have left. I will not support reducing this committee more than one time. And the request has been to go down to 16. If we have to come back, then this, you've changed the whole dynamic of the committee because you've lost the input of those people that no longer are part of it. And that's why these 18 people were selected, was to get their variety of input and to make this a good solution and a good answer for this community. I'm not going to say that we're going to go down to 10 people here and say that's our new committee, because I will never support that. So that's why these people are drifting away. They've been on this, and they thought that this would be done, and I get that. People get tired. So you're going to have to step it up a little bit to get people, I think that maybe will energize them, if you can give them some guidelines and some goals, and say, here's how we want to finish this. We're going to be here in a month. We're going to be here in two months. That way, the people that are kind of waffling, waving on the fence, standing on the fence, I don't know if I'm going to come back, maybe it'll give them impetus to come to these personal meetings. And let's get something done here. I believe it's going to take a motion from the council to amend the original ordinance to drop this to 16 people. Is that correct, Mr. Cogly?
Yes.
Okay. And that will be one of the challenges for us. But those are my recommendations, and I've supported, I think we need to finish this. Wanted to finish this. And the community wants it finished and get this done. September 1 will be one year from the date that we appointed the 18 people. That's time. Let's do this thing and get it done. You got the talent here. You've got smart people working on this. There are smart people that come in. I understand that they are opinionated. And that's what I like. I like opinions. And I like diverse opinions, because that makes, Mr. Dixon and I talked about that, it's making the sausage. And that's how you come up with these things. At the end of the day, hopefully, we come out with a good product. And you guys will have to sift and sort those bad pieces out. Okay, Ms. Martinez, really quick.
I get it, Mayor, but I was the first one to speak. And I think I have to clarify a few things. Thank you. Can I add that out of 18 of the task force members had a chance to meet with members of the Elgin PD? And I believe that that's critical to meet with the department. The department that you're trying to improve, you know, I'm personally disappointed that since September 2021 until now, five or seven task force members have taken advantage of this opportunity. And I think that you had said everybody. Second is, I was also hoping that the task force would look at Elgin PD from Chief Lally on, since Chief Lally is our chief right now, because I feel that she has made changes in her term that have put this police department years ahead of other police departments. So I was hoping that would be, because, you know, I get it. I've been here my whole life, too. I was born and raised here for 62 years. My family has been here since 1948. And let me tell you, it was not pretty growing up. When the police department used to go ahead hand-in-hand with When the police department used to go ahead, hand in hand with immigration and naturalization services, that was scary. It happened in our house, okay? And so, but I know there's been improvement, okay? And that's the things that I think we should, you know, okay, this happened, what are you doing about it now? You know, for me to go about my whole life of what happened, I don't think that's fair for everybody. We need to stay focused. Second is, you're right, Chief Lally, she is awesome. That's why she's our police chief, okay? She's been here for 26 years. Who better can go ahead and improve and learn from previous mistakes? Because, you see, when you make a mistake, you have to accept the mistake, first of all, okay? Then second, you have to learn from that mistake, and then third, you have to improve from that mistake. And I think the police department has done that. Again, people have issues with resource officers, take it to the district, okay? You'd need to take it to the district, because they're the ones who are hiring the police department, who are asking for the police department to go, because if you go ahead and you take that away from Elgin, or you think you can take it away from Elgin, what about the other cities that are involved? The district is very large. But I think that's an issue that has to be brought up with the district. Second was, let me see, I think that's, I think that's about it, you know? I'm not saying that this is terrible, no, this is good. Sometimes you have to be challenged, I think, to go ahead and become better at what's going on, you know? But I know for a fact that what I always try to do are things that's going to be better for the whole city, not just a certain segment. So I'm sorry that I can't support this now, you know? Prove me wrong, is what I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I entertain a motion to amend the ordinance to reduce the number of persons on the task force to 16 from 18.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Just a question for clarification. I believe that the chairwoman said that it's at 15 with...
Okay, 15.
Okay.
Well, we, just as a matter, we only have an official resignation from one member.
Okay.
Okay. And just for the record, there's only been one official resignation communicated.
Okay.
I've heard of two, and that's why there was the talk of 16 to 18. 15 was something new, and I think that's what we're just trying to clarify.
She just sent it last night.
Okay. So.
Okay.
16.
It's 16? Okay. Ms. Powell says it's 16.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So the amendment would reduce the amount of members of the task force to 16. Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Abstained.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thorne?
No.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 7-1 with one abstention. The next thing is the approval of the, vote on the approval of the item before us, which is to extend the contract of Kearns and West for $95,000.
So moved.
Second. We're just ready for a vote, I think.
Pardon me? We had a motion before.
It was already moved, second.
Okay. Anything else on this? The extension for...
So I was just, I don't believe I got any follow-up on the questions of subcommittees not being facilitated and the option of remote, because those would impact the cost of this extension.
Yeah, thanks, apologies, Councilmember Good for not addressing that the first time. The subcommittees going on without a facilitator is not a part of what we have proposed. I think that happened, that idea came out in meetings that the committee had in this pause period, where our work paused and they continued on. So our proposal is to actually facilitate subcommittee meetings. So I don't, you know, I'm not sure, resolution of that? I mean, I'm open to anything, and we're open to anything that makes sense, but there's a difference there in terms of what was proposed, and then the pause happened, and folks had meetings afterward.
Excuse me, but, Mr. Manager, that was, the proposal from Kearns and West included the facilitating of the work, is that correct?
That is correct. And as Dr. Horst is stating, in the interim, there was some suggestion as to whether the subcommittees can fold. I guess I can suggest that it's not necessary to make that determination by legislation. I think that the task force and the council providing direction, and with Kearns and West being here, can make those determinations. We know that there's a not-to-exceed amount, we know that there's a deadline, and the parties will make determinations as to what's most effective for reaching those goals.
But it gives us the flexibility. If you need that facilitation, it's there. If we take it away, it's gone for good. Okay. Thank you for that.
I've got another question, correct?
It was just, in addition to that, is, using the same pathway as we're going to use with the question of the subcommittees, is there any appetite or desire to have facilitators remain remote, whereas the work group meets in person?
In our, and I believe my partner Larry has spoken to this as well, I would not recommend a hybrid kind of version of facilitators being remote, and it's just, it puts the facilitator alone in that awkward position of the online, which we experienced, right? How different that is. And now you have just the facilitator in that mode. Your ability to read the room, to moderate who's speaking and so on is just extremely challenged. It's feasible.
I appreciate your feedback. That's, yeah, I appreciate that.
And, trust me, the body language and the facial expressions are important
Absolutely.
to people sitting around a table. Makes a world of difference to how the meeting goes. So.
Yeah, no, that answers all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor, I would like to really thank you all, I take it lightly, because being on this task force, I really see how important your job is, I mean, all of you all, seriously. I didn't know how much time that you guys would be spending, even though I was a, you know, even though I was a city employee counselor, I didn't really know just how much time you all spent. So I want to thank you all. You all, you all really love the city. I don't think you would do this if you didn't love the city. So I really want to appreciate all of you all. I really do. I thank you all.
Think we all love the city. Okay, we have a motion. And a second, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
No.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 7-2. Thank you.
If you want, Mayor, I could suggest... Is, is further amendments to the ordinance may want to entertain, to provide guidance to the Corporation Council, that the ordinance be, we have the ordinance amended to reduce the task force from 18 to 16. The ordinance should also be amended to create the new September 1 deadline, and you could also ask the Corporation Council to come back with a provision that provides for the 60-day reporting.
Okay, could we ask the corporate council to do that for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that'll put the, that'll put the boundaries around it.
So that everybody's in agreement.
And, okay. Okay. Announcements from the council. Ms. Powell?
Yes, just one announcement. Had the opportunity to attend a retirement for a longtime city employee about a week ago, just want to say congratulations to Billy Rodriguez, otherwise known as Billy Rod. Worked in our Parks and Public Works Department for about 37 years. It's a long time. So just want to wish him a happy second phase of his life and thank him for his service to our community.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to mention, for the community's benefit, that one of Elgin's longstanding sustainability initiative was featured in a national NBC news segment on Earth Month. Our Public Works Department has been using its super-mixed beet juice and water-salt burn mixture since 2005, nearly 20 years ago, reducing the city's salt usage by up to 40% or 5,000 tons each year. Other cities and states are now looking at Elgin's best practice to reduce their salt. And on another exciting initiative that our Public Works Department is currently implementing is the LED lighting project. Elgin will be the second-largest project of its kind in the state of Illinois. Chicago also implementing the LED light replacement project. They're the number one. So a special thanks to you, a special thank, a special, so, a special thank you to our Public Works Department for always keeping us at the forefront of initiatives, environmental stewardship, and sustainability projects. I appreciate your hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Just something really quick from me, I want to thank everyone. As you know, I went through a rough patch for the last month or so, and had knee replacement, got hospitalized. I want to thank everybody that contacted me via social media, telephone, visits, and the offers of help. At the same time, I was getting ready to, for my knee surgery, my wife broke her ankle, so both of us were kind of hobbled, and people offered to get us groceries, and that's what this community does. Thank you all very much. Announcements from staff?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?